So, welcome to the March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two Select Board meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency as amended by Governor Baker. On February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board and commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards the quorum. This meeting is broadcast live and recorded on Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast ninety-eight and Verizon twenty-three. And on ECAT's website at www dot easterncat dot org. This meeting is closed caption for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a question or comment, please email the Select Board at selectboard at eastern dot ma dot U S. If you're watching from an electronic device, please pose your question in the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. And please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stevens.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. Thanks for being here, everyone. So the first item that we have is a timed public hearing. Craig, do you want to read the public hearing notice for that?
Sorry, Dottie, if I could just interrupt quickly, I apologize, but we do have the first item for Ann. I believe she and her family are here and the hearing can open a couple of minutes behind under open meeting law. The board is willing to consider that.
All right, terrific. So we'll have Deputy Director of Health and Human Services and Community Engagement and Programming, Ann Daly, come on to, so we can congratulate her on her retirement.
So while Ann is moved into the panel, I want to first thank Ann for agreeing with Dottie and I to even put this on the agenda because Ann, it doesn't like a lot of fanfare. Is kind of a true public servant and just wants to do the work. And I told her that I would try to be somewhat succinct and I'm not off to a good start. So Ann, thank you for being here. I, just for the board's benefit, I know it's in a packet, I want to go through a few notes regarding Ann. This is now, I think, the third meeting of yours in a row. We've had a member of the team who's been here for many, many years has announced their retirement, so. It is, you know, bittersweet, but it's really great for Ann and her family. So Ann has been a member here in Easton, a member of our team for twenty years, and I think more than that at account the schools. Working through the ranks from her first post as a record account clerk to be Recreation Program Director, up through the ranks ultimately to become a Deputy Director of one of our largest municipal departments, Health and Community Services. Ann's passion for recreational programming is infectious and she has been the face of recreation in Easton for so many, for so long. She has always been deeply devoted to the community. Going above and beyond her official duties to bring great programs to children and residents for many years. And I know that includes having her family involved who are here tonight and we thank them as well. In addition to her daily work for recreational programming, Ann served on many committees in support of many other committees, and I'm not going to get all of them here. But that includes and is not limited to Recreation Commission, the five twenty-four Depot Street Master Plan Committee, the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, the Old Colony Elder Services Board and many more. From a town pool to basketball, children's races to frisbee, T-ball, the summer programs, Ann has brought physical engagement and social programming to Easton. Touching hundreds and thousands of lives and families over the decades and we thank her tremendously for her service. And, 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 and I know I'm not off to the start you wanted, I think, but from, from me personally, thank you so much for, for your work and everything you've done for the community.
Thank you, Connor, for the kind words. I appreciate it. I've really enjoyed working for the town and I've met and worked with amazing people. And I'd like to thank all the people in town that have supported me, which, you know, through the community for supporting the programs and people I've worked with, the schools. And I'd like to thank my family for their support. They have been working, they're all on here tonight and they have my husband, George, my three daughters, Erin, Laura and Sarah, and Sarah's fiance is on here also, which he has also helped many programs. It's been a busy and fun job. It's really been a lot of fun and meeting so many great people and the kids, it's been wonderful. And the seniors and everyone, it's just been a, it's been a great experience.
Thank you so much, Ann. We're just going to each, I'm going to offer each Select Board member to, to pay their personal congratulations to you. We're going to start with Craig.
Ann, I want to congratulate you on, on your service to the community of Easton. And I'm, I'm looking forward to your having an opportunity to, to be retired. And like I retired, Ann, about, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, and I think I'm working more hours now than I did when I was working professionally. So good, good for you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Mark.
Congratulations, Ann. Your, your name and reputation precedes you. I think you've, you've touched every member of the community from the youngest to the oldest citizens in town and everybody in between, and that's not even an exaggeration. And it really actually, you know, when you write hundreds or thousands, really is thousands of people because you know, if it was a one, if it was one child, then it was their whole family. So you really made an incredible impact. Congratulations and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jamie.
Ann, thank you for everything. Your, your name comes up in many conversations. The Eastern Youth Baseball League has often said, if there's anything regarding the town old fields over there, I call Ann. And, and I hear that over and over and over. Call Ann. Oh, she'll know. And it was a matter of where to get the answers and where to get them, you know, quickly and, and just a lot of help. So thank you for all you've done for the town.
I think he's saying you might have to change your phone number now, Ann. Jan?
Hi, Ann. Thank you. Congratulations first and thank you so much for your passion and your commitment to service over the years. Social programming here in Easton is really such an asset to the community. So thank you for the tremendous work that you've done in that space over the years.
Thank you.
And Ann, I've known you for a long time, much longer than before I was on the Select Board. My children were little and went to the, the egg hunts and the rubber ducky. We're not out of the, out of the town pool and all the fun events and you just, you and your daughters were at everything. It just really brings back a lot of memories thinking about your time that you've been with the town. And then most recently, getting to serve with you on the Age Friendly Action Committee was really, you know, just such a joy to, to interact with you and to see you from that perspective as well. And I really appreciate you stepping up to be on that committee and to really lead. And I, I just had such a really good time with you over the months and I'm really going to miss you. So I hope to see you around town and, you know, bump into you here and there and congratulations on a very well-deserved retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And I'd like to thank all of you for everything that you put into the town and all your hours and work and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ann. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks.
Okay. So we, do you want to go to the timed item now, Connor?
Sure, that, that makes sense if the board is going.
And then we'll go back to the Town Office CPA renovation schedule.
Sure.
Connor, I mean Craig, if you want to read the six o'clock public hearing notice?
Sure. The Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities. Will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P M. To consider and act upon the application of Manaben Meghey Corporation for a transfer of an existing section fifteen off-premises package store wine and malt beverages license from RWJ Beverage Massachusetts LLC to Manaben Meghey Corporation for premises situated at twenty-five Washington Street, Easton, with a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
Thanks, Craig. So is the applicant here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I've got like a few screens going at the same time here. So the applicant, Hina Shaw at Manaben Meghey Corp, is requesting the transfer of a section fifteen off-premises package store wine and malt beverage license. We have the notice of the hearing, the application and the other related documents in the packet. The application has been circulated to town departments for comment and there were no concerns. And so we just want to hear from the applicant to tell us a little bit about what's happening.
Hey, good evening, Board. My name is Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney for the applicant as well. So if please, as the board, I can certainly give a summary of the transaction.
Sure, and we're really interested in, you know, this is an opportunity for you to tell us about the, the new business so the people at home can know about it, where it is.
Absolutely.
What you're offering. So please include that.
I, I certainly will. So before the board, this is the transfer of the wine and malt license, which is currently being used at Easton Wine Company, which is being sold to my applicant, Manaben Meghey Corporation. As you stated, Hina Shaw is with us today. Ms. Shaw will be the one hundred percent shareholder of that corporation and also the licensed manager. There are no major changes expected to the business whatsoever. This is at twenty-five Washington Street. Ms. Shaw has been in the retail industry for several years. She is alcohol tip certified. This is an opportunity for her to purchase a business and to continue to grow it. But there's no major anticipated changes to the operation, no structural changes, no changes to the hour, to the hours of the business. Ms. Shaw is a very experienced operator. As I said, she's very excited to be part of Easton. There is, in addition to that, there's a pledge of the alcohol license to Rockland Trust, who is helping to finance the purchase. So if the board were to approve the transfer as well, we'd be asking for them to approve the pledge of the license to Rockland.
Thank you. And thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Shaw. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your interest in Easton and what brings you here?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So, Easton, I have always heard is one of the very good towns in Massachusetts. I've, I've read a lot about it and therefore it, I live in North Attleboro and I've heard about Easton and that brings me to this opportunity which I want to avail and help with the community in whatever way I can.
That's terrific. So this, this wine and beer shop is located in Roach Brothers, for people that might not know. Washington Street is, right?
That's correct.
Any comments or questions from anyone on the board?
Luck with everything.
Yes, Mark is the, the Chair of the Economic Development Council. So we all care deeply about small business. We want you to be successful. One thing that I tell all of, any applicant who is having a beer or wine license in our town is we are a college town. Care of your certifications and experience because we do take that very seriously. Once or twice a year, we do have a compliance program and we want to make sure that everyone is being carded properly and just want to make you aware of that. It sounds like you already know. But I, I, for the record, like to go, go on and let people know and also to let the public know that we do care about that and we do have that conversation when we're doing the license.
Also, we'll have the state of art scanning device so that we can scan it, scan the IDs as well as card everybody.
Okay.
Excellent.
Terrific. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, Craig, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that the transfer of existing section fifteen off-premises package store wine and malt beverage license from RWJ Beverage Mass LLC to Manaben Meghey Corporation doing business as Easton Wine Company at twenty-five Washington Street.
Oh, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. So congratulations. Welcome.
Miss, Miss Chair.
Thank you so much.
If, if I may, can I just ask the board to approve the pledge on the record as well? We've had some issues with this with the ABCC recently if it hasn't been approved, independent of the transfer. So there'll be an approval of the pledge to Rockland Trust on the license.
Connor, is that something we can do if it's not listed specifically on the agenda?
It is, it is part of the application packet. It is checked off. So I think it'd be safe to, to make that motion.
Okay, so.
So the motion is to, that we approve the pledge by Rockland, for Rockland Trust?
Yes, it'd be an approval of the pledge of the license to Rockland Trust.
Approval of the license to, to Rockland Trust.
The pledge of license to Rockland Trust.
Right, so, so moved.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you and thank you so much for everything. Have a very wonderful evening.
You do the same. Thank you.
Okay, the next public hearing notice, Craig.
Okay, Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities. Will hold a public hearing by a remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two at six oh five P M. To consider and act upon the application of Eastern Country Club LDT, LTD, I'm sorry, for a management agreement with Two Jerks BBQ Limited Partnership for an existing section twelve restaurant all alcoholic beverages license for premises located at two sixty-five Purchase Street, Easton, Mass. With a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
Thank you, Craig. So we have Mark Lombardi and John DePalma here. While they're joining, I'll just give the summary, the Eastern Country Club and Two Jerks BBQ are requesting the approval of a management agreement for an existing section twelve restaurant all alcoholic beverages license. A management agreement allows the license holder to retain ownership of the license while delegating management responsibility to another entity. We have the notice of hearing, the application and the other related documents in our packet. The application has been circulated to town departments for comment and there were no. So, hi, Mark. How are you?
Good, Dottie. How are you?
Good. Thanks for being here tonight. And thank you for being here tonight too, John. Do you want to tell us a summary to the public about what you're doing and what that means to, to the business at the Country Club and to Two Jerks?
Sure. First of all, for a couple of Select Board that I haven't met, my name is Mark Lombardi, co-owner and general manager of the Eastern Country Club. The short story is, is that during the COVID lockdown, I recognized that the first stage of reopening would be outdoor table serve. We were a banquet center. We do a lot of banquets, so we do quite well at that. But we really didn't have the staffing or the menu to, to handle a table service type dinner service, although we had a beautiful view and large patio that we could handle it. At the same time, I heard that Two Jerks BBQ in Rainham had, had had a fire, had the misfortune of having a fire in their facility and they were entirely shut down. They couldn't even do takeout or, or any kind of service whatsoever. So the fact that the Eastern Country Club had a turnkey-ready kitchen, we invited them into our facility and they did very well. We had a lot of fun that year in the summer serving outside and the relationship's only grown since then. Two Jerks' role up to now is that they do all the prep work for all the food. It's our staff that serves it and we also handle the, the beverage alcohol service. At this time, my food and beverage manager, who you may know, Mark Minsky, is stepping down after a long career. And I think the opportunity warrants itself to allow Two Jerks to handle the entire food and beverage operation there. They're both trained culinary chefs. Their food is tremendous. If you haven't been down to their restaurant or over to my place, so. And they also have been running the restaurant for many years and they have experience with the, the service of beverage alcohol.
I think that that was really innovative, particularly in the beginning of COVID, Mark. A lot of businesses were trying to figure out what to do and scramble and that was a really natural match for you. And I think that was, you know, an example that I know I use when I talk to people about some of the creative ways that businesses were working together to try to support each other. So congratulations on that and for, for continuing it and seeing the value of that to move it into a different, you know, an enhanced.
Thank you.
Any of the board members have any comments or questions? John, did you want to add anything?
Mark, how are you? Good to see you again. This seems like really exciting news. The next chapter, you know, I've enjoyed Two Jerks over there before. Food's fantastic and you're right with the, you know, your patio is actually stunning, the view is stunning. I'm looking forward to this expansion, full-time next chapter.
Thank you, Mark.
Jamie or Jack?
No, just thank you very much. It's, yeah, pretty exciting to have, have access to Two Jerks right here in Easton now. So it's fantastic. Thank you.
All right, and John, did you want to add anything?
Well, we're excited. We like being at Eastern Country Club and we're excited for the next chapter.
Terrific. Well, I've had the food down at Two Jerks and it's delicious. I feel like anybody that just tunes in are going to think we're awfully rude calling, calling a group Two Jerks. So you have a great offering and really we're very pleased to see you partnering with Mark and, and the Eastern Country Club. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
Well, I move to approve the management agreement with Eastern Country Club LTD and Two Jerks BBQ Limited Partnership.
Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. So congratulations and we wish you continued success.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, we are going to go back under announcements and proclamations for the Town Office CPA renovation schedule. Connor?
Thank you, Dottie. So just for the board's benefit and the public's as well, we'll be including this in our online newsletters. CPA Committee voted to support funding for renovations and preservation of the exterior of the town offices. I believe in May of two thousand and twenty-one, that project has finished design and been bid and now after the board awarded a contract, I think at your last meeting, construction has kicked off as of today. So folks will see that at the office. It will include work contributed in-house by DPW for drainage. It will include restoration to the windows and doors, the exterior paint, gutter trim and drainage work. And the full restoration of the main entrance, which as we all know is a little tired, including restoration of the columns. So that will be a, a great project. We're all really excited to see it. We're appreciative to the CPA for funding that and voters at town meeting as well. So obviously the town office is a very old building, so it's going to be a variety of abatement activity going on onsite, both with lead paint on the exterior as well as with asbestos for windows. So they have hygienist onsite at all times during those activities. They have the appropriate measures in place onsite, including negative airflow trailer to ship those things off as necessary to be restored and reinstalled free of any of those hazardous materials. But folks will see tarps and, and plastic shielding and folks with, with masks. So figured might as well just explain right upfront what that is. So that started today and they're going to be working on that through the summer and into the fall. So we're very excited and, you know, part in our construction while we make those improvements. Happy to answer any questions from the board if there are any.
Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to say, Connor, that I very much appreciated your interest in acknowledging this, not only the CPA, but the members of our community who supported the, the project last, last fall.
No comment. I'm just really looking forward to seeing the outcome.
Jamie?
Yeah, likewise, no comment. It's an exciting project and restoration is near and dear to my heart.
Jan?
I just agree. No, no comment, other than just it's a really great project and the building is beautiful. So excited to see the outcome.
I am too. It's always bothered me, you know, coming in and seeing the faded facade and, and the peeling paint and, you know, there's so much more behind that. It's not that you can just slap a coat of paint on it. There's a lot of intricate work behind that and really happy to see that. You know, that's the first face of people that they see when they get to our town hall. So it'll be really nice to see that done and I know our town hall employees take a lot of pride in the space where they work. So I'm really excited about it and can't wait to watch it in progress. So thanks for the update, Connor.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have one-day liquor licenses. So the first one is for Letitia Scott for Boss Up Day. I believe it looks like Ms. Scott is here. She's applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a Boss Up Day picnic to be held at Borderland State Park, two fifty-nine Massapeau Ave, from two P M to six P M. And an Eastern Police detail is not required. Is, is Ms. Scott here?
I believe she's being welcomed.
Yes, I'm here.
Hello. Thank you for being here tonight. We wanted to give you an opportunity to tell you a little bit about, about the event that you're having and if it's private or open to the public or.
Well, it's, it's open to the public, but we sell tickets. So we had it at Borderland last year. Location isn't given until after you purchase the ticket. It's really an elaborate adult women empowerment picnic. We introduced it to the women. This is my third year, but this is the second, this will be the second year at, at Borderland Park. And they've said that this is one of the best events that they've ever, ever had. It's very elaborate. I wish I could send you guys pictures, but it's very nice. It's pink and white, everything, every, all the women are dressed up. They come out, we eat, we have cocktails and this year we'll have a couple of speakers and games, a bunch of photo ops. It's just a day to celebrate women. It's not just for entrepreneurs. It's for all, all women, mothers, women that work nine to fives, women that have their own business. It's just a celebration.
Sounds like a lot of fun. Where can people get tickets?
We, on my Instagram, we have an Instagram page and we promote mostly on Instagram. So that's where we post everything and then we'll create an Eventbrite after all the paperwork and stuff has been submitted and all the approval. So we'll have an Eventbrite up and then people are able to purchase their tickets.
So where's your Instagram?
If, if you guys want to look now, it's boss.
We want the public to know so that if people.
Oh, okay. It's, it's at boss dot up six one seven. So it's B O S S dot U P six one seven.
Okay, great. Any questions about the, the license from any of the Select Board members?
I enjoy your, your enthusiasm, Tisha.
Thank you. Thank you. So excited. I'm honestly just excited about it. Every year, these women come out, even the police officer in Easton, she was asking so many questions like how do, how can my niece or how can, she has a niece and someone else that she was like, be a part of this? The people in the park that walked by, they were amazed. They, they wanted information about it. So I feel like Easton is a, a perfect location. It's big, it's beautiful. And even though it's a private event, event, people still ask if they can attend and we don't have a problem with that. And I try to promote on some of Easton pages and it's kind of hard to get in these pages, but I'm trying to get my foot in the door of promoting more in Easton versus outside of Easton. I'm from Attleboro.
Well, send an email to us at selectboard at eastern dot ma dot U S and we'll see what we can do to help spread the word for you.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
So I, I move to approve the Boss Up Day picnic, two fifty-nine Massapeau Ave, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, from two P M to six P M.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
Thank you, guys.
And Fulgenetti.
Thank you, Tisha.
One of the things that I, I forgot, I didn't, I'm working off a different computer screen, so I missed this line, so I apologize. The recommendation is approval contingent upon the issuance of a Department of Conservation and Recreation Special Use Permit. So you'll still need to get that D C R permit.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I definitely know that. Yeah.
Okay.
Because last year, they, I guess there was an issue with getting this permit first before I got that permit. So this is what. So this is what I have to get first and then I can submit it to get the other permit.
Awesome. Well, good luck with your event and thank you for choosing Easton and we're very happy to hear about uh, the successful event last year and wish you great success this year.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night.
You too.
The next uh, item is Stone Hill College Women's Basketball. Um, they are applying, Helen Berkowitz of Stone Hill College has applied for a one day all alcohol license for their women's basketball banquet to be held in the sports complex at Stone Hill College. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. This is scheduled for April first, twenty twenty-two, five PM to eight thirty PM. And um, I don't, I'm looking in the uh, attendees. Stone Hill doesn't usually come to these, but um, any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
I have none.
Okay, Craig, would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the women's basketball banquet, Stone, at Stone Hill College, three twenty, Washington Street, April one, two thousand twenty-two from five to nine, uh, to eight thirty PM.
Second lamb.
So that's Bajra and Lamb?
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes?
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. Thank you. So the next item up is a commission on disability appointment. So we have an applicant, Elizabeth Gray. Um, she, Elizabeth actually came to one of the last Commission on Disability meetings and she's participated in um, some of the work that they've done in the past. So I did have an opportunity to meet her. I'm trying to see, I don't see her in the um, attendees, but um, she really, she's uh, she's got a lot of great experience and, and great um, enthusiasm for the commission. And I think she would be fabulous to serve. Um, she is currently the secretary on the Board of Directors at Independence Associates, which is an independent living center. Um, and she uh, ha- has physical and learning disabilities and works in special education. Uh, she has a degree in human services and currently works at the Kennedy Day School at the Franciscan, Franciscan Children's in Brighton. So um, I think uh, she'll be a great addition to the commission. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion and we'll get a second and then a roll call vote.
Yeah, I, I move to appoint Elizabeth Gray uh, to the Commission on Disabilities.
Second lamb.
So that's Bajra and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Bajra, Gray.
Lamb, Gray.
Stevens, Gray.
AC, Gray.
And Full Janetti, Gray. So congratulations to Elizabeth. Um, there's a Green Communities, one second. A Green Communities Committee Appointment, Christine Atkinson, um, for a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So um, I, usually when we only, when we have already interviewed somebody, uh, we know Ms. Atkinson and if it's uncontested, they don't necessarily um, come to our, our meeting. So I don't see Ms. Atkinson in the um, attendees. So Craig, if you'd like to, i- if anyone has any comments or questions, or I'll take a motion.
Oh, I just moved to appoint Christine Atkinson to the Green Communities Committee with a term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second lamb.
So that's Bajra and Lamb?
Bajra, Atkinson.
Lamb, Atkinson.
Stevens, Atkinson.
And Stacy Atkinson.
Uh, that's Stacy Atkinson.
And Full Janetti Atkinson. Sorry about that. Alright, so next we have um, uh, contract award for MHQ two marked twenty twenty-one Dodge Durangos for a contract number POL two thousand twenty-two dash oh two.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. Uh, we have Deputy Chief Boone here. Uh, and if there's any specific questions about this, but in your packet, there is a memo from the police chief regarding uh, purchase, regular fleet uh, vehicle purchases from the police department. In this case, two uh, marked Dodge Durangos. Uh, as listed in the quote, this is to be funded from the previously approved capital uh, budget from fiscal twenty-three.
Thanks for being here tonight, Deputy Chief.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
So do, do you um, wanna tell us about this or?
This is uh, it's pretty straightforward. It's our annual, um, this got approved at a Fall Town Meeting, so it's, we're replacing two cars with with pretty high mileage on it now. So this is just part of our fleet maintenance program to replace two older mileage cars.
Okay, terrific. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
Oh, I have none.
Um, Deputy, how are you?
I'm doing good. How are you, Mark?
I'm doing alright. Um, so are you guys moving away from, from cars and, and into SUVs entirely? Is that the plan? I'm just curious.
So we, we, we struck gold with the Durangos, so to speak, and uh, they've been great on, there's been no maintenance problems with them. So we started moving to Dodge a, a few years back because we were having problems with Ford overall, uh, with the Explorers. And the Durangos are just as good on gas mileage and they're bigger and this last uh, winter, the storm we had, they were pretty uh, they, they saved us a lot. So um, everyone seems to like them. They're safe. So we're gonna, we're, we're trying to move from all cars back to the SUVs, yeah.
Outstanding.
Dottie, Dottie, just like Dad, well, uh, yeah. Hi Deputy Chief Boone, good to see ya.
Hi Jamie, how you doing?
I'm doing well. And, and I will say, having been on a ride along and been in a Charger, uh, it's tight and, and that doesn't, you know, speak for the folks that have to sit in the back of that thing occasionally, but um, so the room is, is, especially with all the equipment that uh, uh, we're, we're asking officers to wear, including their protective gear. Um, it's, it's uh, hugely beneficial to be able to get him out of that vehicle rapidly without any safety, you know, concerns, especially during uh, stops on the, on the street. Um, making sure that they can expeditiously get in and out of the vehicle and out of the way of uh, traffic is huge. So yeah, just having been in that, uh, you know, in the last couple of years, I really can also appreciate the, the move. So thanks for being here, Keith.
Nope, thank you for having me.
Terrific. Craig, you wanted to make a motion?
Absolutely. Um, so I move to award two marked two, twenty twenty-one Dodge Durangos, POL two oh two two dash oh two.
He accidentally muted himself. Craig, you're muted.
I didn't know if that was on my end or not. Craig, you muted yourself.
Yep, I don't know what happened, but okay, so I'm gonna move to approve two marked two thousand twenty-one Dodge Durangos, POL two oh two two dash oh two. The target amount is a hundred and ten thousand dollar, a hundred and ten thousand, forty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second lamb.
So that's Bajra and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes?
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And Full Janetti, yes. Thanks for being here tonight.
Nice to see you, Keith. Take care.
Good seeing everybody. Have a good night.
The number ten is a discussion and vote for the Blanche Ames Elementary School Break Builders Project Change Order Number Six. We have Walter.
Dottie, so while Walter's moved in, just for both the board's edification, uh, you established the technical review committee uh, procedures for a school planning committee where uh, project management staff and members of the committee meet weekly to review uh, ongoing change requests and credits. And uh, from time to time, bring those bundles forward, uh, netting out credits against any changes that have been deemed necessary to advance the project. Uh, something PMA has done for us that I think is helpful is that they always show on their uh, change order memo how much of the contract time has elapsed versus how much of the contingency has actually been utilized. It's a good kind of yardstick of how we're doing on managing those change requests. And so uh, as of the eighteenth, what you're looking at is uh, forty-eight percent of contract time elapsed uh, with fourteen uh, percent of the owner contingency expended with the execution of this agreement. So uh, Walter always comes in because there's a great level of detail on the, the spreadsheet attached and maybe one has any questions, uh, but I recommend approval.
Perfect. Craig, you good, do you have questions?
Uh, I just love when Walter goes through the stuff cause so I can really truly understand it. I see Mark nodding, so I
Yep, not a problem. I'll run through them. Uh, so uh, a few PCOs on this one. So PCO thirty, um, this was the hydraulic load test. Um, this was the hydraulic load test on the septic uh, leaching field at the Parkview School. Uh, the reason we did the test was so that we could determine if we could eventually take a credit back. Happy to tell you that that is getting priced right now. So original price on this PCO to do the test was twenty-one thousand. Um, it was about eleven thousand dollars to do the test. Um, but we, we were able to um, issue a pricing exercise to the builder. Um, because if you remember, we did include the additional leaching chambers in the bid price, so we are gonna seek a credit. So um, it will likely wash out this change. Um, and we'll work through the, we're working through that with um, the contractor now. So eleven thousand dollars to potentially save some money on the other end, um, which was a great choice uh, by the TRC. Uh, PCO thirty-three, uh, this is steel canopy sheathing and, and the facade. Uh, so at the roof edge of the canopy, uh, so if you've driven by the Lothrup Street side, uh, that's where the loading dock and really the secondary entrance for the community area, um, and uh, recycling and trash pickup and deliveries will be. Um, there's a small or a canopy uh, that's outside there. It's about a, I believe a hundred and seventy feet long. Uh, there was no detail shown on the uh, roof edge of that canopy. Uh, so this PCO added the correct detailing. Uh, unfortunately, it was missed on the drawings, but um, the material, um, so no one ever bought it, no one ever paid for it, wasn't shown. Uh, so this uh, PCO covers the uh, framing from that, from the Miss Metals uh, subcontractor and from the um, so the, the sub-framing and then the framing uh, for both uh, Miss Metals and the Carpentry. Uh, that was thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Um, it, it was a pretty big run of that area, um, that was not shown, um, unfortunately, but um, the good news is it wasn't paid for in the bid. So had it been included on the drawings, it would have likely been roughly the same cost uh, on the bid. Uh, moving down, we have PCO thirty-eight. Uh, this is the gas meter relocation. Um, this was uh, quite a while in the making. As you can see, it started at about twenty thousand, four hundred dollars. It was that, it's now down to fifty-seven, um, fifty-seven, fifty-seven, seventy-five. Um, and this relocates the gas meter, which I don't know if anyone has one very near one of their offices, but they make a pretty good hissing noise uh, when you're up close to them. This one was located on the building and specifically right upside of an office for central administration and likely would have been a little bit of a distraction. Uh, this is to move it over to the transformer area, so about forty to fifty feet away and across the street and behind ballards. Uh, was approved by uh, the utility company and the gas company as well. Um, so this was additional plumbing for that and um, to relocate the lines for the run from the street over and then some above ground as well. So plumbing lines included. Uh, next PCO, PCO fifty-two, uh, you'll see a big discrepancy on this one again from where it started to where it finished. It, we uh, PMA and Perkins Eastman um, worked with the contractor. Uh, the original price submitted for this scope was forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, we did not feel that was uh, in the best interest of the town to accept that price. What we did was we went T and M on this. We tracked every man hour, every piece of material that was used. Uh, so this was actually behind the uh, um, Fieldstone Masonry and it was some additional sealant along the wall that was not shown on the drawings. It was required by one of the shop drawings. Um, so we tracked it. Um, good news for the town, that, that tracking saved uh, about twenty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, about thirty thousand dollars. Um, the, in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. That went around the entire perimeter of the building. Anywhere where you see the Fieldstone Masonry going up. Um, so the entire perimeter of the hundred and forty thou, hundred and forty thousand square foot building. Uh, next item uh, was PCO fifty-six. Uh, this is a rated soffit at stair three, which was not shown on the drawing, not called out. Um, so needed to be done. It's a fire code requirement. Was not purchased as such, um, so did need to be changed uh, to meet um, the fire code, uh, for four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Uh, moving right along, PCO sixty-five, uh, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, oh fifty-nine. Um, again, kinda at the base of the wall, uh, we have a precast uh, flat, uh, precast masonry unit that goes on top of the Fieldstone Masonry. Uh, in between that and kinda settled behind it is a stainless steel flashing pan that um, allows the water to weep out. Uh, at the ends of these, uh, where they tie into different um, locations on the building, there is no detail called out on the drawings. Um, so uh, the mason um, identified that. He noted that he carried a less than preferred product. Um, and we do not have a detail to tie him to that would have shown the stainless steel. Um, but the architect absolutely recommended that this be done in stainless steel to provide longevity, durability, maintenance, um, relieve maintenance issues at these locations. Um, so this is for the material and the installation. We did receive a credit um, for the other material that he planned to use. Um, and while that was not an approved material, we did get a little bit of a reduction in that number as well. So that came down about um, seven thousand dollars. Um, but it was a, a, a really good call by the technical review committee and, and the uh, architect as well to really recommend that, that stainless steel. Um, PCO sixty-eight uh, was a uh, change at the ramp at the building and I think everyone knows we have uh, the large universally designed ramp uh, that runs through CAF two um, in the building. Uh, the, uh, unfortunately, a little bit of a detail mix-up on the drawings. So for the structural steel, uh, for these posts, they point out to the architecturals and the architecturals direct you back to the structurals. Uh, there are no details on either of them as to how these ramp railings were to be installed or attached. Um, a little bit of a circular reference, um, but again, not paid for in the bid, um, which is the good news. So um, this is really just something that needs to be done to make sure that these railings get installed properly. Uh, PCO seventy-two, this is full height ceramic tile. Uh, this is at um, one of the main corridors. Uh, we did not have tile going to the top of the door and the detail was not going to look uh, flush. So we were gonna have a tile with a door jam and a um, a door frame uh, kind of protruding out even further than it. So this tile goes, uh, takes it up to the full seven feet uh, and goes over the door frame. So it's a smooth finish, um, and a flush finish, flush condition, no edges. Um, so that's at both um, the, both corridors. Um, and we were able to catch that. So that was uh, only eleven hundred dollars. Uh, PCO seventy-four, this is lighting at the janitor's closet and gymnasium, gymnasium divider curtain power revisions. Uh, the janitor closet did not have any lighting shown in it and the gymnasium divider uh, curtain power revisions um, just relocated some of the wiring to a more local, uh, more uh, acceptable condition to be operating that curtain. Uh, that was fifty-five hundred dollars. Uh, PCO seventy-six was a credit of twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, and this was a carryover on one of the electrical drawings. Um, and it was not carried over throughout the entire building. Uh, it was not desired, it was not called for um, or desired in the design by anyone. Uh, this was for under cabinet lighting in the classroom um, sink area and the classroom cabinetry area. Not something that we, PMA has ever typically done, not something that um, the designer has actually ever done. It just kinda snuck in on the drawings. Um, and it was only in certain areas. Uh, so we did catch it, we did remove it, um, and that netted out to a credit of twenty-one thousand. Um, so uh, good savings for the town there. Uh, the next item is PCO eighty. It was an increase of seven hundred and eighty dollars to ornamental fence on the east side of the site, uh, the roadway. Um, if you've been over there, we have a large retaining wall on that uh, east side of the site. Um, the roadway is a little bit higher than the top of the wall there. Uh, on top of the wall is the fence. Um, the grass slopes down to that wall and so if you're standing on the road, kinda walking in that area, you're actually, y- you do seem like you are three, two to three feet higher. Um, so what this increase on the um, fencing is gonna do is make it seem like a six-foot fence from a, a little bit higher eleva- elevation back further from it. Um, makes it a little more in, um, enticing for anyone walking with it, maybe jump over, wanna climb on it. Um, so that was a recommendation from the architect. Um, wasn't a requirement, but definitely a, a good to have, um, especially where we're at with the budget. And then the last uh, piece of this change order is PCO eighty-one. This is added labor and material for glue lamp install per the design supplemental. Um, unfortunately, in one of the addendas, it uh, removed the detailing requirement uh, from the contractor and put it on the architect. Um, so there was no detail shown for how to install and set these glue lamp beams. Um, and they are quite intricate and there are quite a few of them. Uh, so the detail was provided by the designer, um, but that was not uh, part of the bid, um, unfortunately. Um, kinda the same situation on a few of these um, errors and omissions, but uh, unfor- good news is it wasn't in the bid. But uh, unfor- good news is it wasn't in the bid, um, so we're paying for it once here, um, it's not additional work, but it is work required to complete the project. Um, so that was ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, um, that's all the PCOs that make up change order six and. And take any questions you guys have.
Thanks Walter, Craig, you, do you have any questions?
No, I think Walter covered all, all, all my questions.
I, I do have a couple of questions, hi Walter, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, so, um, on the, i- it's not a huge item, but I'm just curious, the, the cant strip and ceiling at the bottom of the wall.
Yep.
Was that not carried, were they, did they not anticipate sealing the wall that goes under the earth?
So, so it's not, it's not, it doesn't go under the earth, it's actually at the, um. The, I'm sorry, the, the brick shelf, so it is above, it is above there, excuse me, sorry. Um, so there's a step on it, and then there's an added piece of AVB where uh, it ties in, so there's almost. It's almost two layers of AVB, and the cant strip is not shown on the details at the top. Um, in the drawings, but on the product that was submitted to get the warranty, the cant strip is required. So i- it's kind of a, it's re- it's actually a, a really a nice to have, but in order to get the warranty on the product, the cant strip had to be included. And it wasn't shown on the drawings, cause it wasn't the basis of design, although it was an approved equal.
Okay, you just, you know, on all these, I, you know, where there's a design change, I completely understand, it's a design change, but I, I've noticed that there's. A good amount that represent a lot of dollars, that there's a, there's no detail that is shown, so it causes, you know, triggers. Um, a whole other step where it's, there's no detail, and now you gotta analyze it, and now there's a cost built in, so. Um, that, you know, that is a concern, uh, as we go through this, this, you know, and I understand a product, a hundred million dollars. You're gonna have this, um, but in, just to be completely transparent, open, um, in my mind, I do. Concern about the details not being in so many places and the cost that is then, that we have to come up with.
Certainly, certainly, and, and just so everyone uh, here knows, PM, that is something PMA tracks, uh, for standard of care. Um, and we would be the first to bring that to the group's attention if we thought there was an issue, um. And at the end of the project, it's something we'll likely review with the TRC and, and, and where we are, but right now, we are well, um. Well within the standard of care, um, for, for a design firm, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. Jamie, or Jen?
I, and you may have mentioned, I, I think it's the same on the stainless steel end caps, that was not. Just not uh, foreseen or, or just missed.
So it, it was not, there's no detail shown on how to terminate the stainless steel, um, flashing at those locations. So they, they have a cut-through, um, detail really showing the middle out, but they don't have a detail where, where it dives into the other material. Um, and actually go, going into that a little further, hu- the mason was planning on, um. Using some type of flashing tape, um, and it was actually rejected. Um, but the problem is we don't have a detail requiring him to use something stainless, so he did. He did provide something that was not going to be accepted anyway, but we didn't have anything to tie him to, to put the. What, what really should be in there, that, that's really the, the crux of that one.
Okay, thank you Walter.
Yep.
I have no questions, thank you for being so thorough.
And thank you Walter, I think you anticipated all the questions that we're gonna have, so I, I appreciate you being so prepared.
Yep, no problem.
All right, and uh, good to see that we're still uh, ahead of, ahead of schedule and where we're trying to be, so we appreciate all your efforts.
Absolutely.
All right, well, with that, uh.
I think I'm staying on for this next one too.
Oh, okay, great, um, so the next one is contract award for Castle Booze Associates, oh, I'm sorry, uh, we have to vote on it. We moved it on.
So I moved that we e- execute change order number six. Total amount, one hundred and six thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Lamb. So that's Bajra and Lamb?
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. So item eleven is a contract award for Castle Booze Associates, um, municipal facilities designer contract DPW twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Sure, so uh, we have Walter and PMA here again for this, but if I could just give a brief overview and update on the status of this project from the board. Uh, so you'll call, uh, in November last year, voters at town meeting approved a half million, uh, dollars in the fiscal twenty-three capital budget. Uh, to move into the feasibility, uh, stage, uh, the review for replacement of. Police, fire and DPW facilities in Easton that are, uh, with limited exception, uh, half a century plus old. Uh, do not meet modern design standards, environmental standards and work safety standards. Uh, we uh, assigned a uh, project management review team under our designer selection, uh. Standards and picked the PMA and then working with PMA as our OPM. Assigned a designer review team, uh, that met publicly and reviewed, uh, bids. Uh, or proposals more accurately from, uh, qualified design firms, there were eight submittals, uh, sent back to Easton. We interviewed, uh, we quantified the, the, each of those based on the criteria and the request for proposals, and then we invited the finalists in for. Uh, quite a lengthy, Jamie, I think two and a half hours of interviews, um. It's a good process, we, uh, ended up, uh, I believe unanimously selecting Castle Booze Associates as the top. Uh, ranked design proposal for this project. Uh, for a variety of reasons, including that they basically built a team of not just Castle Booze, who've done a hundred-plus police stations. Uh, but also Western and Sampson, who are leaders in the, uh, DPW design field, and Mitchell Associates, who are similarly. Leaders in the fire station design field. Uh, so, uh, PMA has been vetting all the materials, and in your packet, there is a fee proposal, uh, from Castle Booze. That is within the, uh, total appropriated budget to get us through, or at least meaningfully through. Uh, the feasibility phase of this project, um. And I recommend its approval contingent on the outstanding, uh, contract form being approved by council and. All outstanding, uh, contractual documentation, things such as insurance being provided to the town. But Walter can give it, it, some more detail on the proposal, and we can answer any questions the board may have.
And just wanna add, Connor, we, we do have, um, Todd Costa and Greg Joint from Castle Booze in the audience, if you guys, uh. Feel the need to promote them and ask them any questions as well.
Greg, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Mark?
None at this time.
Jamie, Jamie, you sit on the, uh, on the, the planning committee, so we appreciate you spending your time on that, and I'm sure you have a little bit of insight for us.
Yeah, so again, I thought the process was very thorough, and as Connor mentioned, uh, came down to. Very thorough interviews for the final two candidates, and, uh, so, uh, I, we can't be more proud of, uh. PMA's work, um, as well, cause I think as we've seen, they've proven themselves. Uh, through the Blanche Ames Elementary School Project, and now to just roll into this and bring that same level of detail and attention. That we know they're looking out for the best interests of the constituents in town, uh, and certainly all the owners of the project, so thank you very much.
Thanks Jamie, Jen?
I have no questions, thank you.
Terrific, well, it's very exciting to see this project moving along, another big milestone. Um, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to award the contract, uh, DPW twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two. To Castle Booze Associates for the municipal facilities design contract?
And that's just for the first facility study phase, or both that and the schematic design?
Walter, I believe, is it phase, uh, one and two, I believe?
It, it's feasibility and schematic.
So it's a total of three hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, so move, Bajra.
Second, lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Bajra, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Right, is that it for you Walter?
That's it for me.
All right, have a good evening, thanks for being here.
You as well, thank you.
Thank you Walter.
Thanks Walter.
Okay, next we have a presentation on the MBTA Implementation Review Committee on Multi-Family Zoning Guidelines. Uh, Stephanie Danielson will be here to talk about that.
Good evening, everybody, I'm going to share my screen.
Great.
Okay, can everyone see the first slide?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, um. Thank you very much. Uh, again, I'm Stephanie Danielson, and let me just adjust this. Uh, the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the town. And I am an ex-officio member of the MBTA Community Zoning Implementation Review Team. Um, which, going forward in this presentation, I will generally refer to as the team. I am here tonight, um, along with Dottie Fulgenetti, who is the Chair of the team. To present the team's findings and recommended comments for the select board to submit in response to the DHCD guidelines. That were issued this past December. Um, as a quick refresher, the MBTA Communities Team was appointed by the Select Board in January. In order to consider and prepare comments for the town to submit in response to the draft compliance guidelines. That the Department of Housing and Community Development issued back in December. At that January meeting, I briefed the Select Board on the MBTA Communities By Right Multi-Family Zoning Legislation. And what the compliance guidelines that were issued by DHCD included. So again, very quickly, the MBTA By Right Multi-Family Zoning. Came out of the Acts of Twenty-Twenty and the Economic Development Bond Bill.
Stephanie, just wanna interrupt for one second, none of these slides are changing.
Oh, sorry, that was just one slide changed, there we go. Thank you. So this, um, the requirement for MBTA Communities to adopt by right. Multi-family zoning came out of the Acts of Twenty-Twenty Economic Development Bond Bill. That added a section to the zoning act. Um, and communities that were designated as MBTA Communities. Need to establish a, at least, um, one district. That can be comprised of several different areas that will accommodate by right. Um, multi-family zoning at a density level of fifteen units per acre. Um, let's see, if communities do not comply with this zoning requirement, they will be ineligible. For certain state funding, that includes Mass Works Grants and the Housing Choice Capital Grant Program. Which are both programs that Easton has benefited from over the last several years. Okay, so since the appointment by the Select Board, the team has met every other week. Over the course of the last two months, during that time, um, we have reviewed, discussed. And ensured it, that everyone has had an understanding of the draft guidelines and what they are proposing. The discussion revolved around the base density requirement of fifteen units per acre. As well as the additional requirement that the district must in total be able to accommodate. Up to ten percent of the town's housing stock, and that would be, um, the stock as determined by the twenty-twenty census. And in Easton's case, that would be nine hundred and fifty units. It was understood by the, um, team that the guidelines allow the district to include sub-districts. So a, um, district is supposed to. Include fif- up to fifty acres, a minimum of fifty acres in total. Um, however, that district can be comprised of sub-districts. As long as at least one section of the district. Be twenty-five contiguous acres of land, and the remaining sub-districts comprise a minimum of five contiguous acres each. And it can be reasonably expected that the district in total can meet the density requirements. That are required, as well as the minimum number of units. And again, um, and the board, and the committee discussed this. The, it's a requirement that the zoning be able to accommodate this level of development. And not that the town actually has to develop it. The guidelines also allow a district to include commercial uses. So your district can include mixed uses, um, with housing as well as commercial development. As, but it has to be, um, consistent with supporting the density requirement for multi-family units. Affordable housing standards may also be included, but not at a level. Meaning a percentage that would make the development uneconomic and thus not likely to be built. And again, this is all important, because these are things that the team needed to consider and talk about. As they were undertaking their charge. During the review process, um, team members noted, um, importantly, that Easton is in a better position than most communities. To meet the requirements of this multi-family zoning. And this is as a result of the progress that the town has made over the past several years. In adopting zoning options that are intended to promote development that will vitalize. Um, the town's target growth areas as vibrant mixed-use, mixed-income, walkable neighborhoods. With diverse housing types, either as part of mixed-use or in proximity to shopping. Services and other, um, and potential work opportunities. So, and as they were discussing, um, potential district areas. The team also stressed the importance of retaining and growing the commercial base. And not zoning out new commercial development, and it was agreed that requiring a meaningful percentage of affordable housing. Should be part of the zoning. The draft guidelines also allow districts to include existing housing that meets the density requirement. So as we began to consider potential sub-districts. We prepared maps of seven areas that either included existing fifteen-unit-per-acre multi-family zoning. Um, such as the area around the Avalon Complex. And where areas were consistent with the Commonwealth Sustainable Principles, such as. Um, being located near existing downtown or village centers. Those maps, um, were reviewed by the team and discussed in some level of detail. In general, each of the maps identified a lesser area where existing multi-family. Already existed or could be easily accommodated and a potential expanded area for consideration. And in just a few minutes, I will go through some of those areas with everybody. So the outcome of the team's review and discussion over the course of the meeting is that Easton has. Um, appreciably, appreciably benefited from the Mass Works. Housing Choice Complete Streets and other similar programs. Um, and, and that's a kind of an important consideration as the town decides to move forward with developing. The required zoning. The team also understood that further analysis is needed to assess the capacity of each of the potential districts. To support by right multi-family, um, zoning that meets the guidelines, um, that are required. But also the town's goals for the zoning itself. The team developed in light of that. in light of that, the team developed guiding goals and guiding principles that will help inform the content of the multifamily zoning districts. The team has recommended comments, questions, and affirmations. You know, there were some assumptions that have been made. And those, we like, would like to see those affirmed by the DHCD as they consider the comments during their review and final issuance of the guidance documents. The, those comments, questions, and have been included in the Select Board's packet that was sent out earlier. We have completed a proposed action plan outlining the steps for adopting the multifamily zoning district. That includes timeline, action steps, timeframes, and milestones. And this is something that is required by the draft guidelines. Again, that was also included in the Select Board's packet. At this point, I'd like to take you through the potential districts and talk a little bit about what they represent and how they could be considered for inclusion in a zoning district. Before I do that, are there any questions at this point? Okay. So the first district, potential district. This is the area in northeast and on Washington Street around the Roach Brothers Plaza. It does have a few units of multifamily zoning. These are condominiums. Here on the right-hand side, this is the Roach Brothers Plaza area. You can see there are some wetlands. These are the areas that look a bit like clouds. So that would constrain some of the potential for future development in the area. But this area has been identified. If the South Coast Real Project were to move forward, this is one of the areas that has been identified as a potential train station, which is one of the reasons it was included as a potential district. The next area is the Washington Main Area, as we've labeled it. These areas in purple generally are areas that support multifamily housing already. And you'll see these structures here. These are the units at 244 Washington Street. They currently, there are two buildings with 39 units in total. And that equates to about 13, almost 14 units per acre. The potential of additional inclusion in the district is the rest of this area here, which includes these potentially underutilized apart, uh, parcels, as well as some of the existing commercial. And again, I want to stress that one of the things that the team felt was really important was protecting Easton's existing commercial districts. And that's what needs to be explored further as we look at scenarios that would support mixed use or commercial in any potential zoning.
Stephanie, just a quick question. So the potential 41 and the potential I see in each of these slides is a potential number of acres?
Correct. I'm sorry. I thank you for pointing that out. That is, yes.
Thank you.
So again, in this one, right now, the 244 Washington Street and the acre, the parcel above is 2.82 acres. And if you add the other parcels in, it's around 41. The next district, potential area, is the location of the shovel works. So you see shovel works here. Right now, that is 113 units on 7.7 acres. That's about just under 14 units per acre. You can see, and this is really just a general. Some of the challenges here for redevelopment is taking into consideration the historical nature of this area. But there's already mixed use and multifamily housing in the district that could possibly add to the ability to meet the density requirements. This is the Foundry Eastman Street area. And this is where the Avalon complex currently exists. There, let me just get that number. They are already at 15 units per acre here. If you add this area in, you meet the minimum 25 acres of contiguous land for your core district. And again, it would be pretty easy to find the other five, minimum five acre just areas that could comprise the district. If you look at the green areas, those could potentially be added. And that would provide a total of 92 acres in total. This is Foundry Depot. And right now, although this area was just rezoned for some mixed use that would allow multifamily zoning, it's not, it's not zoned for the required 15 units per acre, but it could be right for redevelopment and included. Another thing I want to stress as we go through this is that the, we're not suggesting that all these areas be included in the district, but they need to be considered and analyzed for the potential to, and to understand the capacity to meet the objectives of the zoning requirement, as, as well as I said, the town's goals for protecting its commercial areas. But again, providing some mixed use, mixed income, walkable neighborhoods. This is Quasic Commons. And in looking at this, right now, this particular lot right here is already developed with the apartment complex that has, that's 11 Roosevelt Circle. It has 50 units. That's 16 units per acre. And this is the condominium complex, which has another 60 units at a much lesser level of density on that lot that could potentially support additional build-out. The question here is, this is Easton's 40R District. And that 40R zoning is overlay, is overlay zoning. So what we'd probably be looking at, if this were to be included, would be to change the underlying zoning, which right now is a mix of commercial and a mix of residential. So the commercial district, district, the business district extends about 60, 600 feet into this area here. And then the rest is residential. And the presumption would be that by right, it could be developed as multifamily zoning that meets the requirement. But that there would be a question about what you do with the 40R. My understanding is that the way the 40R overlay district works is once there's a project that's been approved and construction has begun to develop the site to the approved project, that that is what needs to be built out. And then the last area is on Turnpike Street, just south of Route 106. This is the location of the Mini Golf and Driving Range and an area that was considered by Dolben back at the same time that Avalon was proposing their project for development for a 40B. And this has a potential 25 acres excluding the undeveloped wetlands area. So those are the seven air, areas that are being considered for potential inclusion in the district. Just quickly going back over some of the key compliance states. March 31st is the last day for submitting the comments. That's why we're here tonight, asking the Select Board to endorse the recommended comments. We have already completed the first, the second step, which is to submit a form that just asks about our current zoning and provide some additional information about the town related to existing zoning. We've already done that. That's been completed. As I mentioned, the action plan has been developed. And then December 31st, 2024 is the deadline for adopting a by right multifamily zoning district. And 90 days after adoption by the town, you need to submit a determination of complete compliance to the DHCD. So our next steps at this point are, again, asking the Select Board to endorse the comments for submittal to DHCD. Endorse the draft action plan so that can be submitted to DHCD for their review and approval. And to consider, X, as I mentioned, there really needs to be a lot of, um, analysis of those areas to determine what would make an appropriate district. So we're also asking that the Select Board consider extending the term of the Implementation Review Team such that they can, may be called upon to assist and participate in the public outreach and in the additional analysis of the potential district and the draft zoning process. At this point, the board should probably make a recommendation to ask the Planning and Zoning Board to start the process for developing the zoning.
Stephanie, can I ask a question about the further analysis for the potential areas?
Yep.
Is that done by that, by the team? Or is that, would that have to come from a professional design or architectural? How, how would you do that?
Well, the suggestion is that we work with some professionals that have done this type of scenario analysis. Really what we're looking at is looking at, at the districts and taking into consideration all the topographical constraints. I think you could see as I went through the districts that we have a load of those areas that look like clouds. That's because those are, that, yeah, that, those are wetland areas. You know, also the capacity of the areas, if they're not already sewed, which most of them aren't, to support septic systems or treatment facilities on-site. And then to look at how, how you might develop with the mix of commercial and the multifam, the, the multifamily, the residential aspect of the zoning. And, and some of that, if you're mixing it and looking at the size of your lots and to meet the density and also the total number of units that are required, you know, that might be that you're going vertical in your development for housing. Or even for your, some of your commercial, depending on what type of businesses you'd expect to attract in that area. So actually being able to conceptualize that it would be helpful to have some assistance with that from technical experts.
Thank you.
Stephanie, to be clear, one of the attachments here for the board to adopt as part of their comments to the State Department of Housing and Community Development is a action plan and timeline on page 65 that notes, I think, the very first item after the ones that have been complete so far, thanks to the team's work, is to seek that technical assistance. And the current recommendation is that the earlier part of this community input over this summer, perhaps, is done by the MBTA team. We would need to revise the charge and extend those terms. That would be an item for a future Select Board meeting. But whether the technical assistance is at that level or brought into support, ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Board will be responsible, as Stephanie alluded to, for drafting zoning. That would be compliant with this, but that, there's a, this was kind of a crunch between the release of the draft regulations and the close of the comment period. But there's a bit more time now for the more detailed level work.
Right.
Do you have more in the presentation, Stephanie?
Uh, no, that, that's it. I mean, I certainly, Connor mentioned the action plan. I didn't include it as part of the slides because it's just so dense. But if, if you want, I can share my, I can bring that up and we can look at it.
It's, it's in the board's packet, Stephanie, along with the proposed comments as well. I think for, I know, I think at least two members of the board were on the team. The comments, I think, are a really important part of this, as part of a state rulemaking process. Think about the PFOs, MCL with DEP. One of the challenges is, which we can sympathize with, they want to, you know, get their regulations moving. You have a limited period of time to submit feedback. And so the, the draft comments pulled together by the team are in the packet as well for the board to consider voting on tonight. And they cover a pretty wide array of really important areas of this, which is that the, the town took a kind of proactive approach of, okay, how do we find ways to make this work? What are the areas of concern with our capacity? And we highlighted various areas, including, you know, confirming whether or not we can use inclusionary zoning practices here so that you're not forcing communities to build out housing that can't have affordability requirement to comply with 40A and therefore fall behind on 40B requirements. There is some good questions in there about, you know, just confirming this can be mixed use, right? I mean, that's, that's something that, depending on the answer, when the DHCD follows up on these rules, could have a huge impact for, ultimately, the planning board on where they think it makes sense for these districts to go. Because to Stephanie's point, there's limited commercial areas in Easton already. And we, the, the team, I felt, Dottie or Stephanie, mark correctly, felt pretty clearly, I thought that we didn't want to pull those off the board, so to speak. So those comments are in a packet for the board on page 73.
Right. So I was just going to ask you, Stephanie, when you were done, if you could share your screen so we could see everybody.
Yes, yes.
Great. So going around for questions. Craig, did you have any other questions or?
Not at this time. It's, it's a pretty complicated process. And I, I thank the team and Stephanie for the initial work that obviously has a lot more to go, but. But I appreciate the work of Stephanie.
Well, again, it was, it was really a team effort.
I do have some comments. I'm on this board along with Dottie and Stephanie. And it's more of a layman's term. I'm gonna try and recap some things. You know, when I first heard about this, I was, you know, it, I wasn't thrilled about it. I don't like the state coming in, telling us we have to do something where otherwise, you know, we're operating fine. We're completely fine. Everything works. So initially, I was very concerned. And this is something I hear from the people in towns too. And so that's why I think this is the first time we've discussed it to this degree in a select board meeting. So we had our meeting, our initial meeting, and what I learned in that meeting was my fears, they weren't nearly as much as I thought they were. So what I learned, and it's a lot of what Stephanie said with these zones, these zones, they overlay with existing zones. So when you say 900 units, it's, all right, it's not 900 new units tomorrow. It's half of those or a large portion of those are existing units. And just because you're creating a zone to occupy these units doesn't mean that there's contractors lined up with bulldozers ready to develop this in the next year. This is just a zone you're creating. You're not actually creating any development. It's just a zone so that maybe in 10 years or 20 years or 30 years, it will be filled in. But initially, I think a lot of people were, you know, shocked at 900 units, thinking this is gonna happen right away. And it's, it's half that and it's decades away. And also, these, all these parcels are privately owned. So you need a landowner who's willing to develop it with these, you know, requirements or sell it to somebody who wants to develop it with these requirements. So after I learned that and then how they can be overlaid with different zones and how they can actually contribute economically to these areas, my, my look at it, it really changed a lot. And I became a lot more comfortable knowing that this is, you know, not happening tomorrow. It's not as many units as we think. And we saw an opportunity to utilize this to benefit the town and economic portions, economic places in town. And then added to it, it's in our packet, but we actually, actually captured all the grants that we've, we've, we've garnered over the past like five years. The millions of dollars that this town, it's where people do take for granted, to a degree, all of these grants that we get that allow us to do sewer, allow us to redo areas of town that keep Easton what it is. And I'll be honest, you know, having been, this is my 17th year in town stuff, we could not exist without those. So if those were taken away from us, I don't know what we would do. I don't know how we would function to the degree that we do function. So it's real important that we're able to keep those because if we don't do this, then we, we lose those. And it's really important. So I weighed all of these different things as I was going through this. I kind of calmed down a little bit from my initial shock. But I think this is, I think this is good. And I think we can turn it into a positive. And I just, sorry to have such a long speech there, but I wanted to throw my observations and what I learned out there.
Thank you, Mark. Very well said. Jamie?
I, I appreciate all the comments that were listed in the, in the pack in the document. How thoroughly do we think those are gonna be answered? And that's a pretty lengthy ask that we have. And I know that most people today read emails, maybe the first lines, half of the second line. So will these questions, you think, be thoroughly addressed that have been put in the comments?
Yeah, I'm going to let Dottie weigh in on this as well. But I, I do, in fact, Wayne Beitler and I, the community planner, who has been a member of the team, we had a conversation with one of our colleagues at Mass Housing Partnership. And one of the things that she told us, and, and this is not necessarily concrete, but one of the things, people have been submitting comments already, kind of one-off, and they are looking at them. And one of the things she said is that they may be reconsidering exactly what that percentage of your housing stock needs to be, depending on the type of MBTA community is. So I do think they are considering and listening to the comments. And Dottie, I don't know if you have anything to add to that through your contacts and?
I would just add that there's only a limited amount of questions before they start to be repetitive. So a lot of the community have the same questions. It looks like a lot of questions on here. And it's multiplied by the 150 something MBTA communities. But all of the suburban communities are gonna be asking, you know, what about infrastructure? What about sewer? What about water? So they're gonna, they're gonna put all those together and, you know, they're gonna have to address those because we're being proactive in looking at this and trying to ensure that we don't get left behind. But at the end of the day, you know, there's certain constraints that we have, you know, and we want to make sure that this is physically possible to even do in our town and that it makes sense for us. Plus, we need to have a lot of public comment and these questions are gonna come in by our community and we need to be able to answer them. And then at the end of the day, we can do all the work. Everybody can agree. But it has to go to town meeting and get voted. And if it doesn't get voted, you know, then we haven't done a clear enough job at communicating why it's beneficial to the community, if it is beneficial to us, once we go through this whole process.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Jen?
No extra questions. I just wanted to comment that, you know, this is really complicated. But I think the work of the group has been incredibly thorough and mindful of kind of the existing lay of the land and the cards that are potentially being dealt. And Mark, I really appreciate your comments about, you know, how your perspective changed based on what you learned and kind of synthesizing that experience for us because your perspective as one of the representatives is really important. So thank you for that. And I really love the guiding principles. I think having them there and seeing them reflected in the questions, it, it's really an important way of tackling something like this. So most of this is a comment, but thank you.
I'm glad that you picked that out because the guiding principles was very important. And that's something that, you know, that the, the committee and under Stephanie's leadership with that wanted to include. And it makes a big difference to frame what it is, what's in it for us? Like, why, why should we want to comply with this if, if that's the direction that we're going in? And there's reasons. And, you know, there's good reasons, like Craig, Mark mentioned, with being able to get those grants, but also to drive economic development. If there's no benefit in it for Eastern, then it doesn't make sense for us to do this. So that's part of what this exploration is as we go along to weigh out, what does this mean? It may not have been presented by the state in the most user-friendly way. Nobody likes to hear the word mandate. You know, it's a mandate in many ways. And we, you know, we get those all the time though. We get them on the school side. We get them on the town side. And we just have to really do our research and know how to make the best of it and make it work for our town. So thank you for that presentation, Stephanie, and thank you to all the committee members. It's a great group and everybody has a real interesting perspective. You'll see if you look at those questions, there's, you know, one of them that I want to call out is, how can the zoning include green incentives such as recycling wastewater and solar passive buildings? And where there'll be state funding to support those initiatives? That's a great question when you're talking about housing because we want our housing to be sustainable. We want, we're looking to the future of what housing should be. So a question like that is, you know, is a great question to have on this. So with that, what, Stephanie?
Oh, no, I, I just wanted to kind of echo that it's really been, it's been fun. It's been a great opportunity working with the team, the representation, the different interests that the, the representatives have, the, just through their volunteer work with the different boards and things. It's, I, I really feel that they accomplished a lot and were very thoughtful. And again, that they can stay involved on an as-needed basis through the process.
And as these draft guidelines become official guidelines and we talk more about it, I hope that we will really get a lot of participation from the community. It's really important to help shape any of these large concepts. So Craig, if you want?
Well, Dottie, can I ask, can I ask one more question, Dottie? I'm sorry. So we, we have to have these in by March 31st. What's the, what's the return time for the Commonwealth to say, we're gonna make changes? We, we're gonna respond to these, these questions? What's, what's their return time? Do you, I don't recall seeing that.
They left that off their memo.
Yes, they did. We, they, they did not set a timeframe.
So it's hurry up and wait. It's hurry up and wait is what it is. Okay.
Well, again, I would, I would expect that, one would hope that they would come out with the final guidelines soon. I, I've, I'm kind of of the opinion that I would expect to see them relatively soon because there are deadlines for complying. And I think that there are a lot of communities, like Dottie said, Easton's getting out ahead of this. I think that gives you more opportunity for controlling your destiny with the zoning. But there are communities that are, are waiting for the final guidelines before they even get started. So hopefully, but, but also I have colleagues who feel like they'll take, they'll take their time because they want to be very thoughtful about it.
And I think that we are too. And, you know, we, we took care of some of the tactical things upfront to be able to lay the foundation for more discussion. I think it's an all hands on deck right now with Department of Housing and Community Development. As you know, you probably get emails, tons of them from me, but from other sources as well. Like every week, sometimes seems like twice a week, the state is doing webinars. Everybody's doing webinars to talk about this. So there's a real push for public information to put it out there to elected officials, to planners, to anybody that would be interested. So I know that they are putting a lot of real thought and effort into getting the information out. So I can only assume that when they are trying to get the information back, they're gonna want to act on that right away as well.
Are you ready to make the motion yet, Craig?
Okay, so the, the motion is to, to approve the findings and recommendations of the, of the review team? Is that what the motion is?
It's to adopt, adopt the comments to the Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the MBTA community's multifamily zoning guidelines.
Sounds like a good motion. So moved.
Second lamb.
Bodger and lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
Enfulgenetti, yes.
Okay, and, and Dottie, we were hoping the board would endorse the draft action plan?
Stephanie, would we not just treat that as a component of the required comments that needs to be submitted to the DHCD?
I suppose, yeah.
It has to go to them. That's part of this, yes.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
That's, that's what I would recommend. It was included as an attachment to the comments.
Okay.
Of course, I'll defer to the board, but I think that's, I think we're covered.
Yeah, I think that we, we agree that everything that's going to them, we've, we've just voted on. So that's, that's taken care of.
All right. Thank you for being here, Stephanie. Appreciate.
Oh, thank you. All right. Good night.
Good night, Stephanie.
Good night, everybody.
Okay, for item 14, acceptance of gifts to the fire department from the Eastern Charitable Trust and from the Richard Tucker Memorial Fund.
Sure. I'm just pulling up the memo here. So attached in your packet, you'll find supporting materials relating to a monetary donation from the Eastern Charitable, Charitable Trust slash Eastern Festival of Trees from Karen Tucker of the Richard Tucker Memorial Fund. Attached in your packet, as is practiced, is a letter from the fire chief to the charity thanking them for their support and a memo to the board requesting consideration of the board to vote to accept the gift. And as you have to, under Massachusetts Municipal Finance Law, you need to devote it to a specific account. And in this case, the recommendation is that it would be a fire donation account for future use by the CERT team. So I would recommend a vote to accept the gift for that purpose.
Is this one?
There's two gifts, right?
Yes.
I believe you are correct.
One is from the charitable trust.
Yes.
The, the Festival of Trees. And then the other one is from the Tucker family. So there's two memos of thank you to, to each of those groups.
Yeah, it's, you are correct. One, I apologize, but first memo is as you described for CERT from the Festival of Trees. And the, that would be the one to the CERT team as the memo indicated. And then the second one was requested by the donor, the donor that it would be used for equipment purchases. So if you would like to do two separate motions, that would be appropriate.
Sure.
So I move that we accept the very generous donation of $6,000 from the Eastern Festival of Trees to the Eastern Community Emergency Response Team.
Second lamb.
Bodger and lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
Enfulgenetti, yes. With, with gratitude for and appreciation. And on the second motion, Craig?
So we, we move to accept the very generous donation of $500 from the Rickert, Richard Tucker Memorial Fund and Ms. Karen Tucker to be made to the equipment account for the fire department.
Second lamb.
Bodger and lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
Enfulgenetti, yes. All right. And item 15 is review the May 16th, 2022 annual town meeting warrant draft.
Thank you, Dottie. So tonight, for the board's consideration, I would ask that you review and then if you're willing, vote to include and recommend three articles all relating to financial policy. Article two is the annual spring bylaw for the establishment of our revolving fund spending limits. But this is a kind of omnibus article that also includes the addition of a new, a new revolving fund, which would establish, establish a fire EMS vehicle and equipment maintenance revolving fund with a limit. And if you look to the warrant, it explains the revenue source here would be funds received by the fire department in connection with the maintenance of fire and EMS vehicles and equipment. They could then use those, those revenues on the same. The, the idea here is as we move forward with Chief Alexander, we've, we've hired a mechanic in the fire department. And that's working well locally and something that we want to have the financial structure in place for is to consider exploring IMAs with neighboring communities that do not have an in-house mechanic to service their equipment because it's incredibly difficult to contract these services out right now of a private sector and charge a reasonable rate for that. We would then be able to use that revenue for our own fleet maintenance in Easton.
That's some pretty creative thinking.
Very creative.
Credit to the chief.
Any, any comments or questions? All right, Craig, would you like to make a motion to include and recommend Article two?
So I move to include and recommend Article two.
Lamb.
Bodger and lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stebbins, yes.
ACS.
Enfulgenetti, yes. Okay, Article 11, a payment agreement bylaw?
Sure. So Article 11 and 12 are both related to the treasurer collector's office. 11 is, is really kind of a formality of accepting, it's a local acceptance statute that allows the town to enter into payment agreements with folks who have land and tax title. So Linda's here to answer any particulars about that. And then Article 12 is another acceptance of state law. This would authorize a treasurer to, to use alternate procedures for disposing of abandoned funds that the town holds on to that we need to, to dispose of. So Linda, if you want to fill in the details there, I would appreciate it.
All right, Linda, you're on.
You're, you did.
Sorry about that. I can just recap those two articles just very briefly. Article 11 is in addition to the bylaws that allows me to enter into written payment agreements with persons who are eligible to redeem tax titles. And in this bylaw, it would allow me to waive up to 50% of
Um, and in this bylaw, it would allow me to waive up to fifty percent of the. Interest on a tax taking. This is significant because right now I'm restricted to. Uh, waiving only up to fifteen dollars worth of interest for anyone by law. Um, and there are occasions where it behooves the town to be able to, uh, accommodate a taxpayer. Uh, it, it's not going to happen in every case. It would only happen in those cases where it's better for the town to. Write off the interest, enter into a written payment agreement and get the parcel back on the tax rolls. Um, so that's in addition to the bylaws. And then article twelve is to accept, uh, a local acceptance, uh, bylaw. For, uh, to accept mass general law, chapter two hundred A, section nine A. Um, this provides an expedited method to basically void uncashed checks. Right now, um, you're probably all familiar with, um, find mass, find my money or find mass money through the. State Treasurer's Office. Um, that's the old way of doing things. Uh, with the acceptance of this chapter, uh, the process becomes very quick. Well, relatively quick, I should say. It still is a one-year process, uh, but we don't have to jump through hoops at the end of that one year to void a check. Uh, there's a very quick and easy, um, notice to the vendor or person who didn't cash their check. And if they don't respond to that notice, we can just void the check, which is something that we cannot do right now.
So you're saying if the town sent a check for something, you sent Craig Barger a check and he didn't cash it. You can void the check instead of letting that sit on the books.
Correct, which I can do right now. It's just that it's a very lengthy sort of onerous, uh, process to do it according to the laws right now. Accepting this, um, the, um, this particular section of the law would expedite it all.
Okay, so let's take questions on, um, article eleven first. Uh, Craig, you have questions on that one?
No, I don't have any questions for article eleven.
No.
No, thank you.
So my question on article eleven is, um, the payment agreement. Do you do payment agreements now?
Yes, I do.
So th- this is more about the being able to waive the interest?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and, um, how, is that at your discretion or?
Uh, it is at my discretion and, um, what I will do if the, if the bylaw gets passed. Is I'll develop a policy whereby it sort of outlines, these would be the types of situations that we would. Um, look to in order to do that, so that there's, uh, there's a, um. You know, a construct for determining who might this work for and who it would not work for. Um, I can think of one parcel in town right now where it would be better for the town to waive it. Get the, its two parcels back on the tax rolls and, uh, let the town go forward. It's a, it's a very unique circumstance. Um, oftentimes there are parcels that have been in tax title for so long. That for instance, the interest and taxes, uh, the total due exceeds the value of the property and the homeowner. Or the par- property owner is not even able to sell the parcels for the amount of money that's required to redeem the tax title. You know, in that case, we could help out both the town and the, uh, property owner.
How does it get that far?
How does it? There's a number of different, um, reasons. Um, the one particular one that I'm talking about just has some very unique circumstances. Um, there's a couple of other parcels where, um, they're on a private road and that enters its own complications. Um, sometimes the, um, and I'm talking about ones that are very old. There are. Um, for instance, um, uh, if, if a property owner has died. There are estate problems that delay everything. Um, getting a property through tax title to the point of foreclosure, which is where the town owns it. Is a very long process anyways. It takes two to three years. I'm not saying that each of those types of properties would be ideal for this, uh, waiver of interest. But there are some where just the nature of the property is so, gets so complicated with finding heirs. You can't fore- foreclose on it until you find all the heirs, you've notified everybody. Meanwhile, five, six, seven years has gone by. Um, and interest is racking up at eighteen percent, at sixteen percent per year there.
Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, another really, you know, kind of classic example of this, not in Eastern necessarily, but in, in land taking generally. For municipal government is there are times where like you just suggested that it's on, you know, the only access to it is by a private way. We don't have any easement on. Or, uh, you know, you could have situations where property has various impacts to it. If it's a former industrial site, if it has. Uh, you know, it used to have hazardous materials where we would go through a process of taking, which can take years in court and cost legal fees. And then the town ends up owning a piece of property that is a legal liability, uh, for, for trespass and things of that nature. So this would. This would be a situation where you would have to look really at the kind of facts of the, the land in question. Until Linda's point, Dottie, I think, um, certainly the board. Would feel more comfortable. We, we could just add to the board's existing financial policies and, um. Establish certain criteria that could be used, but there, there are times where the, the balance of interest is not there for us to go through the process of taking. Uh, and if a private party comes to the table and says we want to purchase this, but the amount of interest is really high, can the town waive half of it? And then that gets out on the tax rolls and they have to deal with the site remediation. If we don't, then that's a win, in my opinion.
Oh, I, I really appreciate those scenarios because it helps me understand it a little bit better. We never want to take somebody's property in the first place, right? So I know that you work really hard behind the scenes to try to not, you know, not let it get to that. We do have auctions for, you know, for properties that had had many attempts at trying to resolve that. And oftentimes even before the auction happens, those issues are resolved. So this sounds just like another tool. Um, to, to do what's in the best interest of, you know, people that may run into those scenarios. So.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be, and also, um, just for your, um, education. Um, the, it, tax title interest is accruing at sixteen percent per year. It's not a small number. Um, even regular real estate taxes accrue interest at fourteen percent. And, um, tax title interest compounds. So whatever interest accrues this year, next year, the interest is accruing on that balance as well. So to say that we're writing a, waiving fifty percent of the interest is, um, factual. But, um, it does not mean that the town is being left, um, uncompensated.
Sure. Okay. Um, Craig, do you want to make a motion to include and recommend article eleven?
I move to include and recommend article eleven.
Second lamb.
Bajer and lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And article twelve, to accept the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two hundred A, Section nine A.
So I move to, uh, accept, uh, to include and recommend, uh, article twelve.
Still move, I mean, second lamb.
So that's Bajer and lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Thanks so much, Linda. We appreciate you being here.
Great. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Linda. Good explanations. Appreciate it.
Okay, down to other, um, acceptance of the minutes of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved, Bajer.
Second lamb.
Bajer and lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Uh, town administrator notes.
None. Thank you.
Okay, select board notes?
I just want to quickly say, uh, how big of a, uh, success the Shovel Town TCS. Um, five K was on Sunday and I think Craig was running and it actually passed me.
In your dreams, in your dreams, my friend.
Oh, that wasn't you. She, someone who was dressed like Craig and passed me. Um, anyway, it was a phenomenal turnout. And I understand that Brax Bar and Grill, um, kind of late, uh, in the, in the, uh, registration. Had a hundred employees that all, um, you know, signed up and what a turnout to see them all. In red, supporting our town, supporting TCS, supporting, um, you know, a, a, a major sponsor. So. Um, it was phenomenal. We had, uh, almost six hundred people registered to run. And I think in the past, our max has been about four hundred. So it was a, it was a record this year. And the camaraderie, uh, and I, I just think the, the goodwill that was spread around was fantastic. So, and it was a beautiful. Uh, bit brisk day, so.
That's great. And what is TCS?
That's Temple High Shalom. That's the, the, the temple in Eastern.
Okay.
So kudos to, uh, to Adam Kempner and Teresa Kempner, who actually pulled this whole thing off. And as Jamie said, there were, there were a hundred, I think a hundred and ten members of the Brax, uh, community. Um, were, were, were signed up, um, eighty or a hundred actually showed up and, and it was a very, very successful, uh, day. And as Jamie indicated, the signups were over six hundred and I think there were like five hundred runners, which. Uh, exceeds by dramatically from two thousand nineteen, the last time we had the race.
Wow, that's great. Congratulations. Okay, if there are no other comments from the select board, we are going to adjourn into executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Massachusetts General Laws. Chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, if the chair so declares, namely the town of Eastern. Versus Charles H. Altwine, Housing Court, number fifteen, CV eight ninety-six, as well as a potential zoning enforcement action. Concerning one eleven Pine Street. We'll be making that motion to adjourn into executive session, not to return to open session. So if I can get a motion and a second.
So, so moved, Bajer.
Second lamb.
Bajer and lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Thanks for being here tonight, everyone, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.